October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting to order, just a couple of housekeeping items. This is a great time, this is a great time to turn your cellphones off or sign with them. And also, if you do have something to say this evening, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. As you can see, this meeting is being broadcast live on Spectrum Cable TV, channel thirteen oh three, I believe, and streamed simultaneously on the Town of Bucksport's YouTube channel. Roll call, Kelly.
Deputy Mayor Eastman.
Here.
Councillor Tarian.
Here.
Councillor Hare.
Here.
Mayor Bissonnet.
Here.
Councillor Rabs.
Here.
Councillor Rankin.
Here.
Thank you. Next, presentations and any town council recognitions, we have a presentation this evening from Eric Dorr of Solar on Earth regarding solar farm dollar credits.
Thank you. And I actually was a little short, not only with some printer issues, but it was me, so I just asked.
Fair enough.
And you guys want to make that work. Want to thank everybody, to include the townspeople here to let me even have the opportunity to present to you all today. I'm here in regards to Maine's community solar program. What that is, is Maine's effort to keep all the solar energy and power that's coming from the solar development farms are going up within our communities. And how they do that is when a developer comes in, you know, of course, per the guidance of Maine on their solar mission, and those farms are about to go live. Things like substations need to be upgraded, not the equipment and they don't own it, the developers don't own that equipment. So what they do is they turn to state of Maine and say, hey, you know, these substations need to be updated. CMP or Versant's kind of saying it's, you know, like, we wouldn't have to unless you didn't put this farm up here, and they're saying, well, it's not our property, so we don't want to. Anyway, they turn to the state and they get essentially grant money from the Green Energy Fund. And the state gives them grant money, but the stipulation is that the state tells developers, well, we have to have subscribers to your farm. That way, we can ensure that all that power is staying in here, and you're not making money off essentially taking up our land and building these farms in our state and then shipping the power somewhere else. Where that fits in with towns and municipalities and a lot of school districts that we've enrolled is that we can connect you literally to the closest development that's in the proximity of the grid that's giving you power now. And really, all you do by enrolling is we give permission to CMP to share your meter information with the developer. What the developer does at that point then is they allocate panels on that farm for the town of Bucksport, depending on the size of your meters and all the meters you oversee. So they read your meter every month, they send that information to developer, developer allocates solar credits to your bill. What that does now is essentially now there's power being generated from a different entity that CMP is not generating. So, but they still are maintaining the grid, and they're still the ones responsible for getting that power literally to the structures, whether it's residential home or school or town office. So the way the system, the way the program works is then now you're going to be invoiced to you by CMP strictly just for their demand charge or their delivery charge, they call it. That's their overhead, that's just how they justify paying their guys or, you know, maintaining the lines, transformers, meter issues, anything you have like that. But anything that was a kilowatt an hour charge, any billable kilowatt hour has now been covered by the solar developer in the form of those solar credits. So then when CMP, before they send you all the bill, they give the developer your meter information, developer allocates the credits, offsets those entirety off of your CMP bill. CMP sends you the bill with just a delivery charge on there now because the power's been taken care of by the developer. And then CMP lets developer know that Town of Bucksport is now has all their meter information back in their hand. The kilowatt hours have been offset by the solar credits you provided us. Go ahead and invoice them, and they'll invoice you depending on the classification of your meter, and if you do look on page eight and nine, you have two different cost savings breakdowns. I do apologize, my printer did act up, so it's really faded, it's kind of tough to see, but the important numbers are still there. You have two different classifications meters, you have one meter that's classified medium general service. Keep going, yeah. Here we go. So you have two of these, this is called a comprehensive savings analysis. And what this shows, and you should have more than one because you have a medium general service meter, and really, if you want to cheat the page, back page of that one, is the compiled ones. If you wanted to skip ahead, if I will. You guys, oh, you got it? Great. So you have two different costs, I'm sorry, two different savings analysis there because you have two different classified meters. You have one medium general service meter. The state offers a ten percent discount on that classification of a meter. Anything classified small general service, or SGS, you find on the page two of the back of your CMP bill, is a fifteen percent discount. And how that discount works and how Bucksport gets that discount is when the developer now invoices you, it'll be at ninety percent on the medium general service meter and eighty-five percent of the small general service meters in which you oversee seventeen at an eighty-five percent rate or a ninety percent rate. So regardless of whatever you're paying for rates right now at a CMP on both your delivery and your supply, or if you're with a third-party supplier and if you've got a lesser rate than standard offer, or sometimes sadly more often than not what I see, someone's, people are paying a little bit more than they were at standard offer, it's still going to be eighty-five percent of whatever the solar developer covered. So when they allocate those kilowatt hours to your bill, they get multiplied by whatever the current rate is at the time. They take care of that a hundred percent, but then they invoice you at ninety percent for the medium general service meter and eighty-five percent at the small general service meter. This is a program, and again, because of Maine's efforts to rely more on clean and renewable energy than on fossil fuels, doesn't cost anyone anything to enroll. If by chance you are all for it, you enroll, but say leadership changes in the next two years, three years, five years, and for political or ideology reasons, the new team that comes in is totally against it, even if it is saving a constituent's money at the tune of tens of thousands of dollars, as you can see on your savings analysis, it doesn't cost anything to get out of the program. It's not like a third-party supply contract or anything where you might potentially be passing off a monetary, you know, penalty to somebody if they have different feelings than you do about the program and about solar in general. So if someone else were to come in, want to get out, no cost whatsoever, they just ask for a heads up. And really, all that means is you call me, you said I need to, we need to opt out, different leadership in now, different ideologies. I need to find whether it's three businesses, ten businesses, or another town that's close by. Essentially, just make sure there's not going to be a vacancy on that farm where there's these panels producing power where there's not going anywhere, right? So it says, give us six months, one hundred and eighty days to do that, but if you happen to opt out even sooner because political reasons or whatever it is, you had to get out sooner, there's still no penalty. But what happens is when they size you, when you are, say the winter is when you use most of your electricity, the summer you use the least, they're going to size you where you use your most, that way you're still relying on solar energy. But in the months where you dip a little lower, you're still generating more credits than what you're using. So you get, it's called a banked allocation. And that banked allocation covers any instances where like, say, you come through and put heat pumps in every single room, and now you're using more power than you were before. And there's a difference from what you got generated from the farm versus what you're using. So in an effort so CMP doesn't have to fill that gap with, you know, fossil fuel power, you had your banked allocation to pull from. If you've got to get out sooner, you just lose those credits. So there's not a monetary penalty, you just lose credits that you were earned over the course of the time you're on the program. And that's really why they ask for the one hundred and eighty days, because I can find an entity to fill that vacancy, and they can start dispersing your credits for you as you start to deplete. So they'll stop generating credits for you, and then they'll start depleting your bank that you'd earned over the time you're on the program.
So we've got solar panels on our town garage and at the treatment facility. Where is the nearest solar farm that Bucksport draws power from?
That was going to be my question too.
As far as I know, I won't know which project until we have your size. What I got was a spend analysis, a breakdown of what you just spend on your bills. But I honestly, and how we estimate your size was comparing that to the rate you're paying, you know, CMP's current rate right now. So we took your costs, compared it to the rate, and we have an estimated amount of how much power you use. But until I have the actual utility bills for each meter that you all oversee and can send that to the developer, and then you get your size, then that determines which project to go on. So I'm not sure which one you'd be on just yet, but it will be a local farm and it will be within the area. But I just can't tell you which project right now.
But to Ed's point, those panels at the DPW and at the treatment plant, those are owned by the Town of Bucksport.
Well, the ones out at the, aren't we under some lease agreement on the town garage? That's a different arrangement than there.
And that's the point. I don't know of any other farms that are currently in the Town of Bucksport. Are you coming?
They're not in the town. There's not, it's not a project in the town. Some, these bigger projects on the outskirts of town, different towns around the surrounding area are still feeding the same grid, the overall grid that Bucksport and some of the surrounding smaller towns are also getting power from.
So we can, we would be able to take advantage of the surrounding towns, or are you here to promote putting a farm in the Town of Bucksport?
Oh, no, no, no. You're connecting to one that's already constructed. It's at the phase where they're about to go live. They're just trying to get, fulfill Maine's requirements to find subscribers to this farm that's already there. They know the size, there's probably even panels and already posts in the ground, and like I said, they're at the point now where they're turning to Maine because they don't want to put money into substations that's owned by CMP, because then when that lease is up, that's not equipment they can take with them. So and CMP is like, well, we don't want to put money in our pocket, upgrade the substation because we wouldn't have to if you weren't putting this farm here. But they both equally know that this is Maine's focus and Maine's goal. So Maine gives them grant money, but the stipulation is that they have subscribers to the farm. They're not putting the farm up if you enroll, you're already connecting to one that's already been approved, the funding's already there for it. It's just a matter of now developer getting people to subscribe to it, allocating the credits and the power from that farm to all the utility bills that subscribe to the farm, and then offsetting those costs at ten or fifteen percent depending on the the classification of the meter.
I have another question, maybe Rich, you can get involved with this. Will this have any impact on the power plant down the street? You know, they're part of ISO New England now and Black Diamond and all that, so that's not going to have any kind of a negative impact on because the state of Maine has a program around the fence line and, okay.
This is, go ahead, Sergeant.
Talk about the process. If this is an avenue that the council wants to explore, the next step would be to refer this to finance and work through some of these deeper questions in that for a recommendation to the full council.
Okay. Is that a recommendation or an action you'd like taken this evening, or?
Yeah, just a direction, one way or another. Yep.
Any other questions? Pleasure of the committee.
I'd like to discuss it more in finance.
Okay.
Just to learn more.
Or we do, we don't need emotion, just a.
Emotion.
I think we're going to have.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to take this discussion up in finance committee.
A second. Questions?
I was fortunate enough to just catch up with Steve real quick. He actually is on the program. You said, was that your home, or?
Well, yeah, it's a different solar project.
Right. And Glenn, if anyone knows the owner of Glenn's place, just to make it clear, it's very close proximity, he's been on the program through me personally for over almost two years now. So he can attest to how the credits are working to his bill, he is seeing the savings, things like that, so.
I can discuss it in finance. Yeah. I was going to ask a question that we can take up in finance.
Sure. All's in favor. Abols. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Can you, one more, can you send this presentation just one copy to the town manager so he can forward it to us?
Absolutely.
Rather than print all these.
Electronic would be fine.
Absolutely.
That's what I mean.
Email. I can do that.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Let's see, consideration of minutes of previous meetings, we have several minutes to consider, they were included in your packet. We have the Finance and Investment Committee minute from September the twenty-fifth to October the ninth, twenty twenty-five. How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
Questions? In favor? You. We also have the Services Committee minutes from, that's hard this evening, I don't know why committee and minutes together, but they are. The Services Committee minutes from October the ninth.
Most approve, second.
Questions? In favor? Opposed? And the Town Council minutes from September the twenty-fifth as well as October the ninth.
Most approve.
Second.
Questions? All's in favor? Opposed? All right. Reports, documents, and correspondence. We have a response from the DEP Commissioner Melanie, from DEP Commissioner Melanie Loizum regarding a letter that this council sent, well, I sent on behalf of the council on October the second. You have anything you'd like to?
I don't. I think generally speaking, she, her response was that things has really changed, and in their eyes, they're for the most part doing, following the process that they've asked, so.
I think, just, I guess all I'll add is pretty much got the response I expected. The DEP is once the landfill closed by, on the date that it assigned, of December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. But I think a caveat needs to be added to that, and that's that AIM or Bucksport Mill is well within their legal rights to put together another proposal, the DEP to consider, and if the DEP were to approve that, after going through all of the processes, that closure order could be amended. I think, I just want to make sure that we're.
They cannot do that without a municipal partner.
Exactly. Yep. There would be a lot of steps for them to go through. But right now, the process stands that the land, the Bucksport Mill landfill is scheduled to be closed. And there are a lot of things that are going into that right now in terms of the closure plan itself. But that, the DEP expects that to be done by December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. But the council had some concerns because Bucksport Mill at the same time is saying, they were even approached us about the possibility of putting mercury from upriver into that landfill, and the obvious question was became, if the landfill is expected to be closed, why are we still shopping it around? We're shopping, well, we're not, excuse me, they're shopping it around because they can. And I fully expect that they will continue to do so, and if they find a municipal partner who's willing to do that, then they were hoping we would be that municipal partner that would proverbially march to Augusta with them and tell them that we would love to have that landfill reopened so that we could put mercury in it. And if you'll remember, the council did not want to hear that. And so I just want to be as transparent about that as possible. I think and I'm not attaching judgment to the DEP's approach here, I'm not, I'm just saying that the DEP is playing their cards probably close to the best too because they have responsibilities, and they could be approached with a plan and they'd have to do their due diligence. And I would be being dishonest based on that letter if I didn't, if I sat here and told, said anything otherwise, then I don't think anyone here would agree with me, but if you do, I disagree with you, but if you do, please speak up. I will not be surprised if AIM continues to shop around that landfill, so, and I think we need to be ever mindful of that.
It's an abandoned asset.
Yep. And I think, I'll say the quiet part out loud, that's going to cost money. If we do not want that landfill in Bucksport, that's going to cost money. Lawyers don't work for free. I'm just going to put, I'm just going to say that now, we're, in terms of setting expectations, like if that, if we continue down this road, the potential for that to cost the Town of Bucksport money to keep that landfill out, to make sure that it is closed, is going to cost money.
The, what, Paul, for those of you that have not seen the packet or the response, the paragraph he's talking about says, "The department evaluates any license application we receive against the applicable laws and rules and will consider what a landfill owner proposes once a complete application is received for processing." While license, while a license amendment application is pending, the current license must remain in effect. So by law, they have the right to come in and offer.
That's right.
To the DEP, so that's what Paul's.
And that's not a top-secret letter, it's part of the, the agenda this evening, but if, if it's the, if we need to put that in its own place on the website or something like that so that citizens can, I mean, the letter's pretty straightforward, but the response from the DEP.
And it goes on to say, "Less than until Bucksport Mill LLC receives an approved license amendment for further operation of the landfill, they must complete closure."
Yep. So I, yeah, I don't, I don't believe the department's talking on both sides of its mouth, but they have responsibility, they have a responsibility to aim to. Let's just call it what it is. They do have a responsibility to aim at Bucksport Mill LLC, just like they do in the Town of Bucksport. And I believe that they're trying their best to fulfill both of those responsibilities. We can, anyway, I'll stop there.
Thing as a council would be to pay attention to any amendment applications and be right on top of those, so we can stop those before they get traction, or try to stop those before they get traction.
We're supposed to be informed of them immediately.
I just don't want to take that for granted, and I appreciate the citizens group putting some skin in the game on that intent.
Yeah, that needs to be said, that we have an active citizens group. Yep, and we, and we put together an ordinance over a year ago now to make sure that some of these, you know, things, notifications and all of that stuff have to take place if something like this were to happen, so. And then they could be challenged legally, and we'll go back to that. This is going to cost money, but it is what it is. But, so I think the council is doing as much as it can to be on top of this. And along with an active citizens group, that can't be understated as well, but it's just going to be interesting to see how this dynamically moves forward between, over the next thirteen and a half months. If I'm doing my math right.
With four snowy months.
Yes, yep. Oops, yeah.
Well, hopefully, snowy months.
Any questions, comments? Okay, all right. Thank you. Next, we have a report from the Regulatory Review Committee, and that is Deputy Mayor Eastman.
Yeah, we took up two items tonight. One was to overturn or modify the current fireworks ordinance, and the committee felt it should be an initiative by the voters to move that somewhere. And the second was to circumvent the Economic Development Committee when no town funds are involved in organizing a community event, and the pleasure of the committee was to keep the rules in regard to community events in place as is.
Questions? Thank you. And a report from the Services Committee, that would be Councillor Rankin.
There was a recommendation from the committee to appoint Paige Henshaw on resolve twenty twenty-six dash sixty-two as a member of the Board of Parks Recreation.
We will take that up momentarily. Thank you. Any questions for Councillor Rankin? We do not have any discussion items this evening. We have two public hearings. The first is an updated general assistance ordinance.
I would just say this again is something that we do on a yearly basis, updating essentially the maximums that are set at state level. So that's all that this is.
Questions from the public? Council? Oh, did I miss somebody? Nope, okay. Close public hearing. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve the updated general assistance ordinance.
Oh, you're right. Yep.
I rescind that motion.
Thank you. I'll be all right. You're just practicing.
I needed to get a laugh from.
See if we get it right on this one. And then what made our packet this, and I did read through it, it was, it was actually interesting, but I'm a nerd. Open a public hearing on the Town of Bucksport code adoption ordinance. Open the public hearing.
Luke, can you present on this?
I will say that's the first time I've heard somebody refer to the code as very interesting.
It was kind of interesting, I think it's.
Did you have questions, or are you just?
We talked them through last time. Maybe just talk through any major changes or the theme of the changes like you did last time.
Sure. Well, so probably the biggest change is the addition of the accessory dwelling unit requirements that were part of the state's LD two thousand and three law. So we didn't really have a say on that, goes get implemented. So pretty much anybody will be allowed to put an accessory dwelling unit, which, I mean, we've had them before, we called them in-law apartments or whatever, but it's a second dwelling unit on the property. There's very few restrictions, and those would be, you still have to meet setbacks, and you still have to have proper septic. And so if you're in city, in city limits and you have access to city sewer, practically the sky's the limit. But if you're out in the country and you have septic systems, you need to have at least twenty thousand square feet by law just to put in a septic for a second unit. So I guess those are like the only restrictions really. So even if you've only got a half an acre, if you've got a septic that's big enough to handle it, I have to let you put in an accessory dwelling unit. Whereas the current ordinance that we had, you had to have a minimum of an acre per dwelling unit. That, that's gone.
And they can be on a shared septic?
If it's big enough, if it's designed for it, yeah. In all honesty, most of us, our septics are designed exactly for what we have and not for anything extra, so that will be not common. But you can expand your system if the soil scientist says, hey, we can add a row of chambers and you can do this, then, you know, it's possible. So the goal of that from the state's perspective was to increase affordable housing. I don't know how affordable it is, but it will increase housing. So that was one of the biggest changes. One of the changes that you got comments about was the zoning change. And that came about, I, you'll remember, I came to you a few months back and told you about a situation we had where a subdivision was approved and the lots were one acre and a hundred feet of road frontage. And it was brought to our attention that that was incorrectly done. And the ordinance had said that when it was a subdivision, it required two acres and two hundred feet of frontage. Well, I went through the ordinance and couldn't find that. Eventually, when I got back to two thousand sixteen, seventeen version of the ordinance, there it was. Somehow it got deleted from the ordinance. I'm sure it was an accident, it's before me, but it happened. And so we talked to the town lawyers at the time, they said those subdivisions hadn't been appealed, and they'd been recorded, they were a done deal, those were good to go. So the decision was, after that was, how do we want to move forward? Do we want to go back and quit it back to the way it used to be, which was one acre for a regular lot, two acres if it was a subdivision lot, if it's in the R-one zone. If it's in the R-two zone, it was two acres for a regular lot, but four acres if it was a subdivision lot. And the planning board unanimously felt that it didn't make sense to have two different standards, one for a regular lot and one for a subdivision lot. So I said, well, it should be the same for everybody. It's up to you guys whether you want to make it one acre for everybody or two acres for everybody, but it should be the same. There's no reason why it should be, you know, I could divide my lot in half and have two one-acre lots, but if the developer wants to do that and it's a subdivision, he can't. Doesn't make sense to have two different standards, in my opinion. The letter you received referred to the comprehensive plan from, I went back and looked through, it was the two thousand and three plan that they made those recommendations that it be set up that way. And they were trying to push growth towards city, and in specifically, they were trying to push it towards the residential growth zone, which made sense at the time, it was, it was a good idea. The residential growth area, I've got it pulled up here, it's this area in yellow. And this is for those that don't know. This is the middle school, and this is Miles Lane right here. So this is right above Park Street. This is the lot the town bought last year to add on to the ballfields. These two lots are owned by just. These two lots are owned by Justin Clapper. It was a developer that was looking at this lot last year. And when Rich walked it with the developer, this was all wet into here and they decided it would be far too expensive to try and develop it. This whole section here is the Miles Lane Trails, so unless the town wants to sell it and get rid of the Miles Lane Trails, that's not likely to be developed. And then these lots back here, most of them already have houses on. So there really isn't a lot of residential growth area to work with. But those were the areas that the committee at the time thought made the most sense, cause this city sewer is up here and here. So it was easy to get the utilities to it, and that's why they thought it made the most sense to develop. Like I said, it was a good theory, um, but it doesn't seem practical now. Um, probably under the next comprehensive plan, we should look at other areas where we want to try and change the zoning and put residential growth in. We've talked about it a little bit, have a couple of ideas, but really it's something that needs to be really looked at and studied, not just to throw a dart at the map. But the other reason that I think the, um, the change makes sense is because of this, what I said earlier with the accessory dwelling units. Um, telling people they have to have two acres for a lot really doesn't make a lot of sense if the laws are saying that the accessory dwelling units can go in and, um, you know, they're trying to, they're trying to make it so that we're maximizing land and putting as much on it as we can. It's completely conflicts with, with what the old way was, was. So I don't know if I'm explaining it very well, but that's.
Does your map that you've got pulled up sh- shows R one and R two? Just so people can get.
So, well, it doesn't show R two, but I can explain. Give it a second, load that. Hopefully. There it goes. So all of this, uh, light green with the gray is R one and R two. And the gray is the R one, what they call the residential corridor. What that really means is, cause nobody understands it, is you can see in the center of the gray is the roads. Thousand feet on either side of the road is the residential corridor. And the reason that's set up that way is there's certain things that you can do in that thousand feet that you can't do beyond. Most of beyond that gray is when you start getting into the R two zones. It's very rural. Harder for, uh, emergency services and stuff to get out to, so you don't really want multifamily housing in R two.
Just.
Sure.
So people are clear, this is forty-six Russell Hill Central.
Yep. Yeah, so the light, yes. Yep. And of course, the River Road's got its own zone, but, um. Yeah, so that's the way the zoning works. I don't know if I answered your question, but.
No, you didn't.
Okay. Any other questions?
More comments than questions.
Please, I'll make sure.
Sure, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, I know you had a couple of questions.
I mean, I, I just think, um, going to a one acre zone is more middle income friendly, and if Bucksport's identified like two thousand and three to now, we've sort of identified now that, um, middle income sort of housing is what we're missing, and to go to, keeping zoning at two acres or higher is not really middle income housing friendly, cause we could be pushing people into bigger properties, oversized houses, and also discouraging development for more affordable, um, size housing, um, so. If, if Bucksport, in which we have identified middle income housing as a problem, I think this would be going in the right direction to the one acre.
I agree. Any other questions for Luke? Thank you.
Thanks, Luke.
I did wanna say, at the last meeting, you talked about the Shoreland zoning ordinance, um, portion of it, and, I'm sorry, the short-term rental portion of it, and, uh, there are some dates in there that refer to twenty twenty-four. Um, those dates are in there because anybody that had a, a short-term rental at the time, back then we called them recreational lodging, same thing. Um, if they had a, a license that was active and they'd gone through the inspection process and stuff, we grandfathered those up until December thirty-first of twenty-four, and then at that point they had to start afresh with the new application process. And it's not hurting anything that it still says that. We could take it out. For whatever reason, the codification people didn't seem to think it needed to come out, so they didn't take it out, so. As I said, it's not hurting anything, it just referred to the fact that those people were grandfathered up to that point. But now that that's passed.
Useful, right? Because if you have people who are st- who had a license prior to, after we're all gone, i- i- and they still have that license in that hypothetical situation, it might be helpful to know that there was that, when this kicked off, that that was there, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, that's a point that I hadn't thought of, so.
Record, thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? How'd the council like to proceed? I did it again, you're right, thank you. It's too bad there wasn't s- a third public hearing, I might get it right, alright. Uh, we do not have any new ordinances to consider. We do have some agenda items and we will get those items approved one way or another, alright, eh. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash fifty-seven, providing for the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Freightliner plow truck authorized by resolve twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine and resolve twenty twenty-six dash forty-three.
Would you say this is the third time you have voted on the same truck? Uh, this is language that is, that was drafted by the town attorney, that is required for the closing documents, that's all that this is.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question? All's in favor? All's, you. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash fifty-eight, accepting a donation from Felicity Lodge number nineteen in the amount of one thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars to support community CPR and first aid training.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Anybody wanna speak about any background on that or Chief Denning?
So several months ago, one of our full-time employees, Emma Downing, wanted to update our CPR mannequins and equipment, which were, I believe twenty-five to thirty years old, so they were pretty old, um. So, one of the things we've been trying to do on the getting grant money and whatnot, is see what's out there a hundred percent, so we don't have to have local money on this stuff. Um, so she took it upon herself to go out and solicit some people, um, and the facility lodge came back, said, yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Um, what we're hoping to do, once, once we get this equipment, we had six or seven of our employees actually become cer- certified CPR instructors. So, down the road, once we get our feet under us, we want to do a community CPR program for citizens, which I think is an excellent idea, and uh, six or seven of the youngsters wanna take this upon it and do it, I said, go for it, so. More to come in the future, once, once we get everything situated, so. I think it's wonderful, we're, we're always being asked, who does CPR? Well, sorry, we don't, but now, now we have that, so.
Rich has another grant writer, apparently.
Any other comments, question? Well, I just, uh, I guess I'll just say, uh, many thanks to Felicity Lodge number nineteen, that was, uh, and, um, a wonderful donation, I'm confident it'll be put to good use, and if we can pay that forward in the community as Deputy Chief Denning has outlined, uh, I think that's exactly how we repay that, so, thank you. How'd the council like to, uh, we have a motion in a second, all is in favor? Opposed? You. Next is resolve twenty twenty-six dash five-nine, accepting the proposal from Comstar for ambulance billing services.
Yes, this is something that we discussed at your last Services Committee meeting, I believe it was, uh, last, last meeting. Um, we have discussed for a while now, I'd say for six months anyways, uh, how ambulance billing is a full-time job. Uh, currently, we have one staff person upstairs who, uh, is responsible for ambulance billing, along with a num- number of other things that go on to the day, you know, the day-to-day business that we do upstairs, and so uh, after some discussion there, our intent, uh, is to outsource ambulance billing uh, to this company that, that, uh, we've recommended through this resolve. Uh, and to not fill the vacant position that currently exists in the town office, uh, upstairs right now, uh, and eliminate that position in next year's budget. Uh, staff is con- is confident that by taking that, uh, out of our office, that it frees up a considerable amount of of staff time and, and resources, so. Uh, we think that, um, this is a good move, and on the flip side of that, uh, I think it is safe to say that outsourcing to a company that only does this and that has departments that specialize in various areas of ambulance billing, uh, it is, I think, fair to say that our, our, uh, the collection of our revenue, uh, I would anticipate to be greater than, uh, what we are getting right now, so. There are two proposals, uh, in your packet. Uh, the recommendation is to award it to Comstar Ambulance Billing Services.
Thank you, Jacob. Questions from the council?
No, I think it's a good, good step in the right direction.
Comstar works with over, around two hundred other municipalities. Which I think was, is hopeful to sort of see that this is not like a new thing that it's very well established with this company.
I believe the net savings, which is important to note, is expected to be in the vicinity of forty to fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, and I think one important piece too is for HIPAA training, that we don't HIPAA train municipal staff, and this is a HIPAA trained organization, um, which I think is really important these days with privacy and things.
Any other questions or comments? All is in favor? Opposed? We had a motion on that, right?
I was gonna say, hold on.
Motion to approve.
It's my fault.
Motion to approve. Okay, second.
We have a motion in a second, all is in favor. We're gonna right this ship, I promise. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash sixty, approving the sewer commitment for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions? All's in favor? Opposed? You.
Nailed it.
We're on, we're on a new streak. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash sixty-one, approving a first-time food service license for La Forge Catering and Concessions LLC doing business as Salsa Shack. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions, comments, please? Hello, Rich.
Hello, uh, Mr. La Forge is in attendance, if you have any questions or would like to meet him.
Well, it certainly is nice to meet you. Any questions or what's, what's your anticipated open date again?
Um, aiming for a mid-November opening, mid to late November. Middle of getting everything prepared. Yeah, very excited to be joining the town of Bucksport.
Nice, excited, excited to have you.
Pretty sure everyone likes tacos too.
Works out well.
Yep, and the smell of taco, yeah, all that, yep, yep.
Are you still gonna do the truck as well?
That's something that I'm still, uh, waiting to see how the, we're gonna concentrate on the restaurant first, make sure everything functions correctly. But, um, I definitely want to do some events with the truck, especially with like the schools, I've already had a couple requests for doing some catered events for, um, the high school and middle school, so I think it'd be really fun to do some more, um, community events with the food truck.
Yep.
Uh, we're definitely gonna concentrate on the restaurant moving forward to make sure everything is proper and we're doing everything correctly and consistent. But, uh, yeah, definitely wanna do both in the future for sure, especially for, um, Bay Festival and other events coming up.
Excellent.
Lucky Bucksport.
Had the opportunity to.
There's a lot of angry Ellsworth people.
Well, I was gonna say.
Twenty miles.
Yes, they're, they're gonna be.
I've had the opportunity to be working on the Budget Committee for the county and, um, I was asked by Stonington in Ellsworth now, um, how many more restaurants Bucksport intends to steal. From other towns in the county and whether we're tr- aiming to be the foodie capital of Hancock County or, and we may shape out that way and we'll take it, so.
It's a good goal.
That's right, yep, yep. It's not gonna help me on some of my goals, but we'll see how we do, yep. Uh, any other comments or questions? Well, welcome, I believe.
Thank you.
You missed a question there.
I did, I'm sorry.
I'm from Virginia originally, so was a friend of ours who moved up twenty years ago to Blue Hill. And he spends half the year with his family in Germany. So he saw your comment, or your, in the papers, and went, get me there now. He's looking forward to coming back.
Nice.
Excellent, awesome. You can win seal.
Wonderful. Well, we do have a motion in a second, how the, uh, all is in favor? Opposed? Almost, yep. Thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yep, can't wait to try it. Uh, resolve twenty twenty-six dash sixty-two, appointing Paige Hensaw, Hen Shaw, excuse me, as a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Questions? All's in favor? Opposed? You. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash sixty-three, appointing Town Clerk Kelly Herrick as warden for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five state referendum and municipal election.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions? All is in favor? Opposed? It's all yours, Kelly.
Thank you.
Resolve twenty twenty-six dash sixty-four, approving the town of Bucksport general fund, fund balance policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions?
Just say that this is something that has worked through finance, it was a recommendation from the auditor that uh, the fund balance policy be updated since it hadn't been since the mill was in operation and the town's finances look a lot different now than, uh, they did when the mill was, was in operation, so this is really standard language for municipal fund balance policy.
Questions? All's in favor? Opposed? You. Resolve twenty twenty-six dash sixty-five, granting an easement to B H G Properties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions, Rich, you, yep.
Mark and Gwendolyn of B H G Properties are here in town, you have the easement language that I wrote up and you have a copy of the survey as well. The, the par- the parcel that we're talking about is a portion of Miles Lane undeveloped. Uh, a portion of that, just north of that was, uh, an easement for the motel so that they could have ingress and egress for the cabins that were being built up there, so this would just be a continuation down to U S Route one.
Uh, just so that we're clear, um, because you said Miles Lane and because sometimes things get turned around, um, Miles Lane used to extend down through where Whembell Apartments is all the way down to Main Street. And if you know where you're going, you can walk that path, um, that is pretty grown over now. When I was a child, too many years ago to talk about, you could walk it quite easily. Uh, but anyway, we are not talking about what, what most people in town think of as Miles Lane, which starts at Broadway and heads up to the schools. It is, you can see a narrow stretch of land, yep.
Thank you. Tall people or my?
Are we in a place where we can talk about what this, what B H G is?
Mark and Gwendolyn are here.
We can talk about that, sure.
Please, come on, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, so we're planning on opening a drive-through coffee shop, uh, we've heard that Duncan really backs things up on Route one, and so we thought this would be a good opportunity for us. Uh, we're both local Mainers, I grew up in Winslow and Gwendolyn grew up in Jefferson.
Uh, we're both local Mainers. I grew up in Winslow and Gwendolyn grew up in Jefferson, uh, and we now live down in Rockport. Uh, so it's a little bit of a commute, but, uh, we're really looking forward to being part of the, uh, business community here in Bucksport as well, so.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, welcome. Thanks for investing in the town.
Yeah.
What's the name of your?
It's, so, it's Aroma Joe's. Um, I still have to wait for DOT and, uh. And basically for them to do the review. Um, and it's not an insignificant investment, you know, like it's, it's quite an investment to get involved. Uh, but we're really looking forward to opening here, you know. I, I think that, uh, all of the, uh, ingredients for success are actually right here in Bucksport, especially for that brand, so we're really looking forward to it.
Wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, absolutely welcome.
We have a motion.
We do, we have a motion in a second. All is in favor? Opposed? You? I'm just gonna sign a couple things so we don't get behind.
Need to push initial each page?
Right, yep. Uh, the next item is, uh, let's see, the adoption, as we discussed in the public hearing. Uh, the adoption of the updated General Assistance Ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions? All is in favor? Opposed? And last, um, under, um, agenda items is adoption of the Town of Bucksport Code Adoption Ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions? All is in favor? Opposed? You. Town Manager's Report. Jacob?
Thank you, good evening. Uh, the Town Clerk's Office will offer extended hours until seven PM on Thursday, October thirtieth. To allow residents additional time to request absentee ballots, register to vote, or update their voter registration. Uh, that will be the final day to request an absentee ballot before Election Day, which will be held on Tuesday, November fourth. From seven AM to eight PM, uh, at the polls located at the Jewett School, sixty-sixth Bridge Street. Uh, and as a reminder, residents registering to vote are requi- are reminded to bring proof of identification and regi- uh, residency. I'm pleased to announce the hiring of Christian Chase Heard to fill the vacancy in our Highway Department. Uh, Christian brings valuable experience from his work, uh, at, with a local construction company. Uh, and I'm confident will be a strong addition to our team. On Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, the Greenfield Penobscot Estuary Remediate- Remediation Trust. Will host a community meeting and drop-in information session at the Alamo Theater. Uh, to discuss ongoing efforts to address mercury contamination, uh, in the Penobscot. The drop-in session will take place from two PM to five PM, followed by a community meeting at six, from six to seven. Uh, during these sessions, attendees will have the opportunity to learn about Mer- Mercury remediation activities. A proposed test, uh, pilot test for capping intertidal flats, uh, and the progress of long-term monitoring efforts. I met with representatives from, uh, Main Water this week. They are currently in the process of going before the PUC. To propose a single uniform rate schedule for all of their utility districts. Uh, rather than individual separate rate schedules for each district. Uh, according to their pro- projections, this change will result. In a slight, and I mean very slight, decrease in residential water bills, uh, for Bucksport customers. Uh, residents will receive additional information by mail in the coming weeks. Uh, and finally, last Sunday, I joined staff and several town councillors. Uh, in attending the grand opening of the Bucksport Papermu- Papermill Museum. The event was a meaningful celebration of Bucksport's rich papermaking history. And a tribute to the many, many volunteer hours that made the munis- museums opening possible. Thank you.
Any questions for the Town Manager? Just something I'd like to mention, uh, if you watched la- our last meeting or we're here, you'll remember that. There were several, there was the opening of the Papermaking Museum and several other ribbon cuttings that we discussed. Um, at the end of that meeting and had a great arrangement for how we were gonna cover all that. And then the following evening, I hit a deer on the river road, um, and, um, threw a wrench and all that. From my perspective, had to deal with that most of the weekend. Um, I would like to thank the remaining members of this council, uh, for filling in, uh, more than adeptly. Uh, for some of those that I had committed to, um. I said, uh, when I was elected mayor, that the story isn't that I was elected mayor, that the story should be that. There are seven people sitting here that could do this job and, and I think that was demonstrated this past weekend. Thank you, this group. Uh, right. Discussion of items not on the agenda for the council and public. We'll start with the public this evening. Mr. White?
Don White Town Farm Road, um, I should have piggybacked this with, with the mayor was talking about with the landfill. Uh, while it appears closure is, is, is where the DEP is headed at this point. That there's still some flags out there that I think we need to stay very diligent about. I think, uh, one of those things is the shoddy closure plan that they submitted. Um, another one is the, the, obviously the Penobscot restoration. And just recently, the DEP has cited, uh, Mallencroft, the owner of the, uh, Holtechem plant at this point. For not doing due diligence and cleanup, so obviously there's, uh, uh, there's a place that. That this still could, this still could get out of, so we need to stay on our toes with this. Um, the excellent letters that were sent by Jacob Grant and, and, and Mayor Bissonette were, uh, we. We also sent a letter, I hope we CC'd the, the, the Town Manager and the Mayor. It just came. Well, we get to it. We're a little slower. We're a little slower, but we, 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 we did meet with, with Jacob and told him we intended to do this and we did, we followed through on that. But I think we have to keep, uh, in mind that, um, I think AIM underestimated. How much money they were gonna make off this. Uh, they, they, they assumed the landfill was, was a, was a plus for them. And if, if closure is true, then it becomes a debit for them. And that I think is, is, is something we need to keep in mind, cause they're, they're not in a, a business of losing. Losing what they considered a good profit on this. Uh, but we need to, uh, stay together with this and be very strong, and I don't think we're quite there yet. It ain't over till it's over. And, uh, the DEP is doing its due diligence and we must do ours. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Muck?
Related. I'm Tom Mock with the Bucksport on McDonald Street. Trying to think when this was. Anyway, I'm chained to the, uh. Distribution of just about everything in Maine government. So the DEP put out, uh, the sixteenth. Something that at the bottom relates to us. A, uh. Daily Digest Bulletin, excuse me. And at the bottom is. A comment about petitions from Bucksport LLC that were accepted for closing the landfill. So that they could do the process of running the application. At the third paragraph of that, it says. The department received the report on the consultation, that's all good. Um, respectfully receives or requests comment on the consultative report by five PM on November fourteenth. Are we talking about the same, this is a question to any and all who might be able to clear my confusion. Um, consultation report, does anybody have that consultation report? We're supposed to be able to respond to it before November fourteenth this year. Am I making sense to anyone?
Uh, if you could send that to me, I'd be happy to look into it.
Okay.
We certainly haven't received.
I don't know whether this is pro forma that's already happened and, or if it's a. It just came up in my head. When I saw it. Alright, that was it. That was what I wanted to ask about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chapman?
Yes, a direct question, follow-up. I'm Ralph Chapman from School Street. Uh. Did the town participate in any consultation with the DEP? Thanks.
Not formally, no.
You may.
Alright.
Yep, I'm just making sure.
Oh, you're good. I, I have to get my steps, I have to get my steps.
Well, we, alright.
Well, some good news, I'm not sure if you read online yet, but the, uh, Caspian Patriot is expanding to Bucksport, Wall and Verona. And the new name, uh, is going to be the River Observer. Uh, kudos to the Ghost Port crew, they did a fantastic job again. Nothing but positive feedback, uh, from the event this past Saturday. If you were downtown, or if you didn't make it downtown, it was packed all day and all night.
May I ask, what was the evening trick-or-treat? I didn't make it down at night.
I didn't make it down at night either.
I was curious if they had a good crowd.
I, I would imagine, um, and, uh, a special thank you goes out to the Friends of Fort Knox. Each year they come to the Community and Economic Development Committee for money for marketing. And they, uh, did a thirty-second commercial, um, fifteen seconds geared towards the two-week event they're doing, which is a scavenger hunt. And the first week commercial went towards Ghost Port. Next week's commercial will be the, uh, they're doing it again for another week, and it'll be fifteen seconds for the scavenger hunt and fifteen seconds for the. Uh, Bucksport YMCA trunk or treat. So kudos and thanks to Dean. They flipped the entire bill on that. The town didn't put anything, uh, towards that. November eighth, um, Bacchus is hosting comedian Justin McKinney up at the Performing Arts Center. Um, I just got a message from Emily, the evening trunk or treat was backed up to Camden National Bank.
Oh.
That's, that's usually how it goes.
Yeah.
That was fantastic. So, yeah, then there's another trunk or treat coming up this weekend as, uh, uh. This weekend as well, up at the high school, as I said, put on by the, uh, Bucksport YMCA, November eighth, Justin McKinney, get your tickets online. The Holiday Lights Parade, December thirteenth, uh, Wednesday's on Main came to the Economic Development Committee, got some money. They're gonna be putting on a Frog Town Puppeteer Show. If I, memory serves me right, it's gonna start. Somewhere around two, three o'clock, maybe four o'clock, but, um, this will be for the Grinch. So we haven't seen that one yet in town. We usually get the Headless Arsenal when, uh, Wednesday's on Main starts up, so. Um, another activity to add to the day. Uh, Friends of Fort Knox is sponsoring the fireworks for that evening, so that's going on. And we've been doing some work, um, if you've seen the news, Bucksport bet has been in the news a lot this week and twice because of the animal shelter. Uh, we've received, uh, some more money towards the GoFundMe account as part of that. And also emails from folks asking how they can contribute as well, so onward and upward.
That's right. Questions for Rich?
Well, I was at the ribbon cutting for Ian's Playground. And, uh. A lot of recognition deserved for a lot of people, but especially. Rich Rotella, cause it's, if you haven't been up there, you gotta go up there, cause the new Ian's Playground is, it's, it's really incredible, so. And that was a lot of work put in by Rich and many others, but Rich in particular.
And town crew did a fantastic job. If you're not aware, one person built that entire playground. And then the town crew came in, put in all the engineered wood fiber and you can easily walk across it. You can maneuver anything around it, so it is one of two ADA compliant playgrounds around. So, anyone listening at home, if you've got friends from away, send them on in, use the playground, visit many of the food port. Bucksport restaurants and, uh. One last event to mention, thank you Luke for reminding me, this just got set up, but December sixth and December seventh at the Jewett School. We're gonna have a festival of trees, also to benefit the shed to shelter for the animal shelter as well, so. Stay tuned for more information in regards to that.
And if you're a business that would like to donate, that, please contact us.
I would just, as a follow-up, this consultation that's being referred to is about the dam. And the town attorney is aware of that and is working on that, so that's, uh, I was thinking landfill when we were talking, but it's, it's actually the dam.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the council?
I kinda just wanna echo Council Rankin. I went to the ribbon cuttings too. It was a really exciting weekend. I mean, if, if you think about, like, and we've really taken it on the chin as citizens without tax bills. But if you really think about how vibrant our town is and drawing in businesses and that these people are choosing to come to our town. We have good schools, good playgrounds, good public safety, uh, and it's just, it was just really exciting, uh, to see the enthusiasm. Um, and also Bravo to, to, um, I think it's Melissa Osborne. For sort of heading up the shed to shelter this really citizen-driven, uh, project. It's just, I don't know, I'm just really proud of our town. People in our town as well, and the people who come to our town and invest in our town.
I've got to speak to owners of the two new restaurants that fired up. At one point, they had, um, up the street, uh, a thousand customers in four days. Uh, over here to the owner of the restaurant on, on Main Street, uh, spoke to them, uh, uh, quite a bit. And, uh, one afternoon, they had people from Belfast and Bangor and Mariahville and. It's, it, it's really good to see Main Street full of cars again, so.
One thing did come up at the, at the playground, um, that, um. Where the memorial is and the flower garden is not in sight view of the camera now and. Just something to consider down the road, but I think. I haven't verified that with, with staff, but, uh, I was, uh, Patty Gray told me that you couldn't see it in the vision within the. Because of the playground has been.
We'll take care of it tomorrow.
Yeah, cause the playground's in a different spot, I guess, in the line of sight, she said, or something.
Playground, so, the playground equipment might be in the way, but, but.
Yeah.
I've got an idea of where we can put another one.
On the light pole?
We, we'll look at it.
Yeah.
Yes. Probably, yeah.
Awesome. Anyone else? All good? Uh, we, I did have something to discuss, uh, but let's, uh, committee assignments and scheduling, let's discuss any committees first. Prior to our next meeting, uh, which if you will remember is our only meeting in November, because the fourth Thursday of November is Thanksgiving. Any committee meetings before our next month meeting?
Well, you can schedule finance for the solar.
Doesn't that need to be taken out of our? We need regulatory review to get that out of there?
Talk about that they're allowed everywhere a single-family dwelling is?
Yeah. Okay.
Just approved that.
All good?
Okay.
Cause we talked about last week, okay?
Sorry, I didn't mean to bring it. It's in there.
Any other committees for that? Six thirty good for that, we think?
Yeah.
We do have an ordinance change. I don't know if you need that to go to committee or not, or if that just goes for first reading.
Yeah. It probably will be regulatory review.
Okay.
For that also, so we can.
So why don't we do finance at six, regulatory review at six thirty, unless we think we need more time on either of those?
And we will, just double-check and make sure I get the day right, cause you have it on there Cemetery.
Yep.
Will be the, that same evening, but at five.
Okay. Yep, so, yeah, we'll. Think you can keep that to an hour?
I think we can.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention something in public comment.
Go ahead.
Um, the skate park's almost ready to submit an RFP. They sent, sent a last draft out. Um, and it's, it's actually more aligned with what we need as a town for an assessment, so. That doesn't go back to committee, but I just wanted to update council that they're, they're back on track with that. And working with Rich and Jacob's also seen that RFP.
Wonderful, thank you. So just so we're clear for, um, prior to our next meeting at seven o'clock, we have Cemetery Committee meeting at five. Finance will meet at six and Regulatory Review will meet at six thirty. Um, I did have an ask about the December, uh, council meeting, if we can take a look at our schedules and make sure that there's not a conflict. Is there any objection to where we only have the, we have the same problem in December that we have in, in, um. Uh, November. The fourth Thursday of December is Christmas Day, so we are not meeting that day. November, the fourth Thursday of December is Christmas Day, so we are not meeting that day, I'm surprised. Um so we would normally meet on the second Thursday, it is not breaking with tradition to, in a month where we have one meeting, to move that meeting closer to the middle of the month. Because we would have quite a gap in between meetings if we, uh and is there anyone who cannot make a meeting on December the eighteenth? Instead of meeting on December the eleventh?
I can make it.
I will check uh. Mr. Bishop, because he has indicated that this will be the last meeting, he believes he he will miss until his term is up unless something unforeseen happens, but. Um if we're good, then um we'll.
We'll have it as a result.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, Chair only turn motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All is in favor? Opposed, thank you everyone, have a good evening.